Get started and jump in. Are we all set on the tech side? Okay, perfect. So our first item on our briefing is Development and Transportation Regulation Amendments, Quincy Construction. And we have Abel Montoya, Chris O'Keefe, and Lindsay Wire with us. Good to see you all.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
As you mentioned, our first item concerns regulation amendments. And as you're aware, we're also going through the Together Jeffco process, which is both plans and regulation updates. This is something that is separate from Together Jeffco effort, but also coordinated. So the idea is to have these regulations drafted and go through the approval process and then shared with our consultants working on the ULOP for the regulations to include them and build upon them as necessary. These changes at a very high level are to clarify items, but then also to put in place practices that are already occurring. For example, with our fire district. So with that very high level, I'll turn it over to Lindsay Wire, who will walk us through the specifics.
Thank you. And if you could please pull up my presentation.
Nice to see you.
All right, this is case number 22-122945 AM. I am Lindsay Wire, the Engineering Supervisor with Planning and Zoning. And I am here to present to you all our proposed regulation amendments pertaining to transportation access. Next, please. The purpose of these amendments is to update sections of the Transportation Design and Construction Manual, the Land Development Regulation, the zoning resolution, and the Storm Drainage Design Amendment. Next slide. Some background on this process. These proposed revisions are necessary to provide clarity and align county requirements with industry standards. These proposed amendments, as Abel mentioned, have been in process for several years and are necessary to codify existing processes that are occurring with the fire protection districts. And if adopted, they will be carried forward and incorporated into the Unified Land Use Code. Next slide, please. The majority of these updates are within the Transportation Design and Construction Manual. And I'll just go over briefly the content of those updates. So within Chapter Three, which is our Design and Technical Criteria, we are updating our standards for templates for streets and roads. We are clarifying intersection spacing requirements. And I do want to mention here that we are not changing our... Oh, sorry. We are providing additional clarity on vision clearance and sight distance requirements. And with this one, we're not changing those requirements. We are just providing clarity between the vision clearance triangle and the sight distance requirements, because oftentimes applicants will get those two mixed. And we are updating Section 3.10 to add a reference to C.DOT criteria. Within Chapter 3.7.8, which is our private streets, roads, and driveways section, we are removing the statement that the appropriate fire protection district may approve alternate standards. And this is the process that is going on now, where the fire protection districts are no longer approving alternate standards. And instead, we are defining a new process for requesting relief of county requirements within the section. We want to verify that this would be an administrative process with decision by a director. We are also allowing up to a 15% grade for driveways and private roads provided the specific requirements I look. We are defining a minimum distance from a structure to a hammerhead turnaround. We are defining load requirements for bridges and other structures. And we are clarifying that the rules and regulations of the applicable fire district will apply unless less restrictive than the requirements of the county. And all of these updates were done in conjunction with the fire protection districts, and we have their blessing moving forward. Next slide, please. Within Chapter Four of the Transportation Design and Construction Manual, we are clarifying that edge drains are required within preliminary construction plans for public streets within our Dthin Rock area. And we are specifying when stop and rest in asphalt is required on. And then within Chapter Five, which is our construction specifications and standards, we are updating those to the industry standards. Next slide, please. Within our Transportation Studies Appendix, we are relocating that section to Chapter Six of our manual. And we are creating four types to include a trip generation memorandum and transportation analysis to be used during reserving cases and transportation impact studies to be used during a subsequent subdivision or site development plan. And we are providing a template for each of these studies to make sure that our applicants and their engineers know exactly what we're looking for. Within our definition section, we are adding a definition for the all-weather travel surface, a definition for the dip of natural terrain, a definition for sidewalk, and a definition for vulnerable roadway users. Next slide, please. So in the zoning resolution, Section Two, we are clarifying how the physical standard of access will be evaluated for different building permit types. For example, habitable versus non-habitable structures or additions to existing residences where an existing access is in place. So here, we are clarifying that the fire protection district may still provide a letter approving an alternative standard for an existing residence and existing access if they're just doing in addition to the structure. Within Section 16, which is our land disturbance section, we are clarifying... Oh, sorry, next slide. We are clarifying that with or in advance of a building permit, when there's less than half an acre, but an applicant is requesting relief of a standard, a grading permit is required. And this is how we process it currently. We're just providing additional clarity to make sure it's easy to understand that that's what's needed. And then we are also adding the requirement that land disturbance associated with access to a detached living space, such as an accessory dwelling unit, or either the access does not exist or was not previously approved as access for a living space will require a notice of intent land disturbance permit for our review. We are updating the notice of intent process to allow modifications to previously accepted plans where construction does not occur per the accepted plans. And this would be done through an administrative review process by planning and zoning alongside a relief request. Next slide, please. Within the Land Development Regulation, Section 15, which is our certification section, we are clarifying that adjoining street improvements are required for all arterial streets and roads when they are associated with a site development plan or a subdivision. And we are removing the statement that the appropriate fire district may approve alternate standards for cul-de-sacs and clarify that any relief would be processed by planning and zoning. And then similarly, next slide. Yeah. Within our Storm Drainage Design and Technical Criteria, we are removing the statement that the appropriate fire district may approve an alternate standard for over 10 feet of a bridge or culvert where it exceeds 12 inches and clarify again that relief would be processed by planning and zoning. Next slide. So our recommendation is the adoption of these amendments at a public hearing. The Planning Commission hearing is currently scheduled for May 14, 2025. Board of County Commissioners hearing is scheduled for June 10. Thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions. I also have Christina Lane here, who's our traffic operations manager.
It's something like that, yeah. It's long, it's a lot. Excellent. Thanks so much for the presentation. We also have Mike Beneta, our Director of Transportation, joining us at the table as well. Any questions or comments, Commissioners? Please go ahead.
So I'm aware of a few legislation or pieces of legislation that are making their way through the process that look eminently as if they are going to be adopted, passed by the legislature and signed by the governor. Do we have any areas within the plan that we think might be in conflict with those coming regulations that we can just take in our awareness around to put on a dashboard of some sort so that we can be prepared for revising these regulations? Or would we want to... Are there certain sections that we just would be overly impacted by that coming legislation?
Great questions, Commissioner. Commissioner, we... There, I mean, we know there are a lot... There's a lot of legislation moving forward related to wildfire. I don't think these regulations are going to be in conflict with those. But I think the important thing to keep in mind here is that the ULOP process does continue. That is going to allow us to be flexible if new things rolling down from the state do impact the regulations that we are looking at to hopefully adopt in June. But as of now, the things rolling down from the state that I've seen do not appear to be in conflict with what we're talking about here today.
It's great news. Thank you. Commissioner Kerr?
Yeah, I was curious. I'd love to know more about each of the definitions, but the one that I like to know is the vulnerable road users. How do we define that?
I had a feeling you might ask about that or something. So the definition for a vulnerable roadway user is a user that is not protected by a vehicle or other shield while on a roadway and is at greater risk for involvement in a serious injury or fatal crash. And vulnerable roadway users would include, but are not limited to, a bicyclist, pedestrian, equestrian, those using mobility devices such as wheelchairs, those using micro-mobility devices such as electric scooters and other forms of rolling through or interstates. And the intent behind adding this definition so that it could be included and considered in our transportation studies. And I think some of the impetus behind this was from the Jefferson County Forest Council.
Right. Thank you.
Commissioner, as one point to that, I would like to ask Christina to share a little bit more about the traffic impact studies and the four different levels. That's a subject of great discussion at our subdivision hearings, for example. And so I think it might be helpful to put a little bit more detail into that.
Absolutely. So what we've done is, in the revisions of this document, we've included a table that basically informs what level of analysis you'll have to complete depending on the number of trips your development has anticipated to generate. So if we're under that 150 trips per day for any given development, then really, we know that 150 trips a day... We look at... It's a little bit nuanced, but we look at the peak hour aspect. A corridor is... You can have lots of volume increase on a corridor. But we're really looking at those peak hours to highlight that. That's when, kind of worst-case scenario for conditions, if a development cannot be absorbed during peak hour, then we're good. The assumption, the understanding is that if you're producing less than 150 trips a day, the peak hour trips are... You're talking maybe a handful during the peak hour. The impact is negligible. So we don't require anything more than just understanding what that is. So that's transportation information. That's that first level. The second level is the trip generation memorandum. So that's between 150 and 800 trips per day. And that's where we require a little bit more analysis regarding what those greater impacts might be. So we have them look a little bit closer at intersections and more so what those greater public improvements might come from the findings of that study. Once you exceed the 850, our current code right now shows that you have to exceed 1,000 trips to acquire a transportation impact study. We want to reduce that down to 800. And the reason being is that then we allow... We require full level of service analysis at our intersections. And that's where really, you know, like especially as we're talking about our transportation mobility plan, for example, when we're talking about those functional classifications and seeing that something might be classified as a major collector instead of principal arterial. The reason that we're doing that is because segment to segment, we really don't have congestion on our roadways at Jefferson County. A lot of our roadways are very overbuilt. We have too many lanes. The pinch points are those intersections. So when we exceed 800 trips per day, we want to understand what our level of service is. And level of service is essentially just your seconds of delay at any given movement within an intersection. Once that degrades below D, then a developer is required to mitigate their impact of pushing that into a F or E or F. So those are kind of the main for the conformance letter is really to acknowledge that traffic data collected in a three-year period is legitimate. There's very little that changes dramatically in a transportation system over that timeframe. And so say, for example, I think a great one is the verb development, where a complete traffic study was done for the entire site. And so we're getting some corridors and some sites that are changing in their use. And so we're requiring that they provide us a letter of conformance showing that they are not exceeding what has already been approved in that prior traffic study. So that's kind of where that letter of conformance comes in. It's really acknowledging that three years of data, that's good. And we recognize that nothing's changing that dramatically. Once you kind of hit that three-year threshold, we'll start requesting an entirely updated traffic study to account for different impacts.
Great. Commissioners, did you have a question? We're on the verge of a question. All in support of moving this forward?
I'm so.
Great. Thank you all very much for being here for the update. Next up, we've got the Quincy reimbursement agreement.
Thank you, Commissioners. This item was brought to you originally in December of 2024. And we had briefed the board in regard to construction of a roundabout on Quincy Street. And at that time, we had a not-to-exceed number. And after the final design has just been completed, that number went up slightly in relation to the total cost. And so we're here to ask for additional funding, if necessary, to, you know, reimburse the developer for our half, which will increase approximately by $200,000. And Mike Beneta is here is going to talk about some of those details and then answer any questions that you might have.
Good morning. How you doing?
Good morning.
Yeah, so this is the intersection of Quincy and Tufts by the roundabout, C.DOT's roundabout. And the development that came through there by Home Depot, the traffic study showed that it requires some mitigation. She's talking about. So one of the options was a signal or a roundabout. Well, you can't put a signal next to a roundabout that's 400 feet away. And C.DOT would not allow it. So the next step was go to a roundabout. And as I said, we had a number originally. It's been since December, and some other things came in from C.DOT also reviewing this and requirements. So the cost came up a little higher. So then they provided a higher cost for us to share on that. And that comes out of the Traffic Impact B South Fund. So that's how the impact fee of that. We pay our half. So there's about four or five million in that account right now. It's anticipated as part of our project. So really, not much. As Abel said already, we have this ready to go. Just needed approval, the staff recommended this agreement in place on a future agenda. The Board of County Commissioners approved the reimbursement agreement with the developer unauthorized purchasing operation manager executing the form approved by the county attorney's office. Staff also recommends that we... The agenda item be brought to a future hearing that the Board of County Commissioners supplemental appropriations in 2025 in an amount of 1.87408092 for the South Traffic Impact B Fund.
Great. Commissioners, any questions? Do you support?
Thumbs up for me.
Thank you. Sorry for a double briefing, but...
No, that's great. That's great. It's always good to see you all. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You bet. Next, we have our Human Services team on the approval to accept Accelerator Advisory Group incentive funds. And that's going to be presented by our Human Services Director, Mary Berg. I understand. We have five minutes for this item.
I think Andy was...
And then we'll have Strategy, Innovation, and Finance up next. Are they with us? I just wanted to get here before you.
There are you be.
Good job, Mary. Take your way.
Yeah.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners, Human Services. Mary Berg, Human Services Director. We have just one item for you today. And this is really exciting. Here to ask for your approval to move forward and accept $15,000 from Gary Community Ventures to participate in kind of a new innovator's sort of collaborative that they're calling an Accelerator Advisory Group. So Gary Community Ventures has been a great business and thought partner, especially with Jeffco Prosperity Partners. They've provided funding. They have worked with us, with our families, to give feedback on what are really some of those avenues to be able to move out of poverty. And I do believe because of our good partnership with JPP that Gary Community reached out to Jefferson County Public Services to ask us to participate in this Accelerator Advisory Group with some additional metro counties, with a partnership of some smaller rural counties and really taking a look at how can we address the distribution of public benefits? They created a tool called My Friend Then, which is a screening tool for benefits that's used across the state of Colorado as well as in another state. And so they're just a great thought partner and innovator. So I'm just really excited to tell you I'm not asking for money for today, but that I'm actually asking if we can accept money today.
Excellent. Commissioners, any questions?
No questions. Thumbs up for me.
Accept all the money. Accept all the money.
We're in favor of that.
Yes.
All three in favor. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got Strategy, Innovation, and Finance. And we... Okay, perfect. We've got the Budget Supplemental Approval for the State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program, presented by Amanda Keel. And we have Christie with us as well.
I believe that Christie is standing by online for the Business and Innovation and Technology item. And then we have, for this first item, I believe Enrel is first, correct?
I have the Budget Supplemental, but it doesn't matter. You take it away and keep it... Yeah. Just on our toes. Whatever you want to go with this.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll start with the Business Innovation and Technology Grant. So these are two requests. Sorry, let me back up and introduce myself. Amanda Kyle, Senior Grants Analyst with County Wexford. And for this, this is a budget supplemental request for the previously submitted, briefed, and awarded State and Local Cybersecurity Grant. This award is for FIBS ProudStrike Falcon cybersecurity licenses. The 20% match that was required for the program was funded by the Colorado Governor's Office of Economic Recovery. And I am before you today to request direction to supplement a Business Innovation and Technology Department's 2025 budget in the amount of $192,000. And I and Christie is online to answer any questions you may have.
Excellent. Commissioners, do you have any questions on this one? So all three in support.
Wonderful. Thank you. My second item is for the National Renewable Energy Laboratory Grant. This is a briefing regarding a previously committed and awarded Clean Energy to Communities Technical Assistance Program. This is an award through Enrel, National Renewable Energy Laboratory, and includes technical assistance from both Enrel and Drive Clean Colorado. The technical assistance provided is intended to strategically guide Fleet's goals for increasing the number of alternative fuel and electric vehicles while expanding the number of charging locations. And we are here again just to request direction to supplement the Fleet Services 2025 budget in the amount of $15,000 at a future hearing.
Any questions?
Two thumbs up.
Two, all right. Love that. All in support.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, Amanda.
Next, we have Parks and Conservation. Speaking of the Jefferson Conservation District and our SLASH program, this item is going to be presented by Matt Robbins and team. So exciting. Come on up.
Love an entrance. Thank you so much.
You need your own walk-up music, you know? So like fire, I don't know.
Work on that.
Okay. Get back to me on that one. It's so nice to see you all. Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Matt Robbins, Interim Deputy Director with Parks and Conservation. And with me today, we have Julie Leggett, our Grants and Special Projects Coordinator, as well as Emily Guffin, our Trails and Access Project Coordinator, and the one and only Sarah, who manages... She's led by one name. She manages our SLASH program. So I don't worry, you know? We keep it pretty tight. We have two things for your consideration today. One is a general fund, and one is open space. I'll take the first, which is our biomass recycling program. And that is the consideration that the county enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson Conservation District to help support this year's and our ongoing efforts for biomass recycling, our SLASH program. For those who probably... We're trying to claim that acronym for Sustainable Lands and Safer Homes. That's what we... So when we say SLASH, it's not just woody debris. It has something more. It means more to the people in our county. So and within this agreement, it's to help us support our 2025 efforts where we plan to increase our offerings to the community by 15% compared to last year. And the role that the special district offers us, and they have done this now for three years, is they manage the weekend collections, which has been a pretty heavy lift. So for those who aren't familiar, SLASH is an opportunity for residents to collect and gather woody debris, create safer homes, bring that debris to identified locations. We have four throughout that rotate throughout the summer. Actually, it's more of a six month. It's May to the end of October this year. And they drop that off Thursday through Sunday. And then we have our team comes in with heavy equipment operators, and they grind and haul that. We recycle 100% of that effort. So we're really proud of that. We're proud of the 9.5 million pounds of woody debris that we were able to get out of the foothills and recycle last year. And we're hoping for even more this coming year. And to do that, this relationship with JCD is critical. This IGA is renewable, but of course, that's pending budgetary considerations. And so that isn't... That is not lost on us either. So I'm happy to answer any questions about this. I will say one last piece in that we do have a... We are having a... We do have a financial commitment, or we would like to make a financial commitment to them for $76,000 this year. We're going to pay that through the RPPF fund. They changed that acronym on me, but from RPPF, whatever that is now. But we've also put in a request for 1A budget consideration for that as well. So we're helping relieve the county of that and utilizing that additional funds, but that should be determined. So we're here today for your consideration.
Great. Well, just we talked about it a little bit during our Commissioner report during the hearing, and the partnership with JCD is so important. And they've been amazing partners. And I should have mentioned that Garrett Stevens, who leads JCD, also is on our Jeffco Wildfire Commission. And he's been there from day one, back when it was a task force and we were looking at recommendations around greater wildfire resiliency. Any questions on this, or are we in support? All three in support?
All, yep. Thumbs up.
Thank you all. I'll now pass it off to our colleagues here. And shifting gears, this is an open space request. So we're wearing multiple hats at the end of the table.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're excited to bring this grant possibility forward. JCU staff request the Board of County Commissioners consider approval to apply for an $840,000 RTD Partnership Program grant. It has a 20% match, which is $210,000. We ask that the award be accepted if issued for the project for the chair to execute the grant agreement and all related documents and for a supplemental budget increase of up to $1,050,000. Emily is the project expert. And I'm so happy to have her here today because I know zero about transportation, zero about shuttles. Learning a lot. But I'm going to turn it over to Emily if we can go to the first page of our site.
Awesome. So the shuttle program, right now, we're calling it the West Track Shuttle Program. It was initially kind of brought to fruition in 2023 by Commissioner Kerr and Councilman Watson from City and County of Denver. If you want to go to the next slide. The proposed shuttle program kind of has three goals, and that's to improve equitable access to parks and open spaces, to downtowns and to red rocks for those who may not have cars. The second goal is to reduce parking congestion at open space trailheads and then in downtown Morrison. And then the third goal is to activate the existing W line and then enhance the use of climate-conscious infrastructure. So shuttles, getting people out of their single occupancy vehicles. We've been working on this project with Denver, City and County of Denver, Denver Park and Recreation, Denver Mountain Parks, Town of Morrison, Dinosaur Ridge, and Jeffco Transportation Engineering to bring this idea to life. And we are hoping to find funding to implement a pilot shuttle program using the RTD Partnership Program funding for the next three years. So our launch would be next summer and then the two summers after that. And so the estimated three-year cost is $1,050,000.
The grant that we're requesting is $840,000, and the match is $210,000. We are expecting to receive contributions towards that local match from each of the partners that we're working with. So from Denver, Morrison, Dinosaur Ridge, and so forth. And so that match will be shared by all the partners and not just Jefferson County. Next slide. This slide just provides a really quick overview of the proposed shuttle program. So the route starts at the Jefferson County Government Center and then heads south down to Matthews Winters Park, the Martin Lockley Dinosaur Ridge Center, the Red Rocks Trading Post, downtown Morrison, and then Morrison Natural History Museum, and then back going northbound at the same stops. We're proposing that the shuttle will run on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays and holidays from approximately 9:00 to 5:00 p.m., from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Do you have any questions about the shuttle program?
Do we have certain metrics that we'll put in place to measure usage and then how we may respond or adapt to what we're learning in terms of usage?
Yes, we do. Yeah, we have three scopes of work developed for the shuttle vendor, an operator, a project manager, to kind of oversee the different contractors that'll run the shuttle, and then branding and contract, branding and marketing the shuttle program. As part of the shuttle vendor scope of work, we're requiring that the shuttle vendor collect data on boardings, the lightings at different stops, peak visitation, whether we're unable to pick up a passenger because the shuttle is full, people bringing bikes, people bringing dogs, people that need ADA accessible options. So all that data will be collected and will be shared with the working group on a monthly basis, and we can adapt based on that.
Nice. Thank you.
I only have one comment. So instead of Trax, T-R-A-C-K-S, maybe we should say Trax, like T-Rex, since we are partnering with the Dinosaur Ridge. I'm just spitballing here.
Yeah. Well, actually, so the West Trax name came from a branding project that JECO Open Space did right before COVID. And the idea behind West Trax is to promote the central foothills area west of Denver and all of the tracks that are there.
Yeah.
So there are the train tracks, the hiking footprint tracks, the bike tire tracks, the music tracks from Red Rocks, the dinosaur tracks. And so there was a lot of thought that went into that, but I do like that idea.
That's, that's good. You got them. Whenever I'm asked, I always come up with like four of the five, and then I'm always like, and it's almost always the music tracks. Music track? No, I love it.
I will tell you, as we work our way through the grant, one of the last questions is how this meshes with their goals and objectives for the partnership program. And we're perfectly aligned with this. So I don't know how many applications we have, but I'm cautiously optimistic.
Nice.
Well, I'm not, just adding a little bit more flavor. So in our discussions, as Emily mentioned, the other partners are, or will be asked to be part of the $210,000 match. I think we're, I mean, from pledges, we're, we're pretty close there on pledges, but I think we're already pretty close there. So that comes back. That shouldn't be an issue. Yes, this is, this has already been two years. We really, really, really were trying to get something done this summer, but we've all talked about better to do it right and get it and have it, have it done. One of the big hurdles to get over is, is a little, there is some physical work that needs to be done for, to make these actual stops that are accessible to everyone, accessible and safe traffic-wise and pedestrian-wise for everyone. I think we are, hopefully, knock on wood, that later this summer, early fall, we might be able to do a day or a weekend of a demonstration project to do this, that we're, we're still hoping that that could happen so that we have something happen this year. But as, as she said, the three are really looking at having this up and running for, for next summer. It's really, really exciting that
Excuse me.
We're here in this room talking about this instead of off in one of the other rooms just talking about it. So.
Any other questions?
Just very quickly, I'm looking at the northbound path and the southbound path, and those pictures look nearly identical except for a little loop at the top on the left-hand side. So what's, what's the difference between the northbound path and the southbound path?
Do you mean just like the little circle?
Yeah.
On the top, right?
They look virtually the same except for that little circular, circle at the four.
Yeah, tour seven.
Yeah.
I think that's the interchange to get onto that, like access ramp to go back to the Jefferson County.
But otherwise, it's the exact same route, whether you're going northbound or southbound?
Yeah, it's the exact same route. This is the route that right now is accommodating the detour on Heritage Road. And I think it also will address the future roundabout that intersection. And so that going down Heritage to Colfax and 40 isn't, isn't an alternative right now. And so we're using 70 to the 470 ramp off back to Golden.
Okay.
But it should be the exact same route. And I think that's just countering for the differences in how to get on the highway from either direction.
It would, it would be great to include Apex. Apex is a very, very popular mountain bike park. And for people in Denver to be able to throw their bike on the light rail and grab a shuttle, it's a very short distance there to Apex. I bet some folks do that already where they just ride over and stuff. But with the Heritage Road construction right now, it really blocks that off. So how long, do, do we know how long Heritage is gonna?
So the, the current closure is just for replacing a culvert. And that's a pretty short closure. So it should be open now or soon. The roundabout closure will be much longer, and I don't have their timeline on that. But I believe that once that road is open, we'll likely modify this route to include Apex and go, go that direction instead of using 70 and the 470 ramp.
Good. Everyone in support? Be the tough one on this, you know? I can live with it, right?
Yeah. I feel like we're moving way too fast.
Well, thank you all so much for being here. Really appreciate his great work. Okay, next up, we're going to go to our Deputy County Manager, Kate Newman, for some policy amendments, including our Declaration of Disaster or Emergency and Candidate Interview and Relocation Assistance. We've got 20 minutes for this slide.
Director, emergency management director for this one, too?
Mr. Weddington.
The heavy hitter.
Hello.
Good to see you.
I've talked to her twice. I need to lose weight.
We are proposing amendments to the Declaration of Disaster Emergency Policy. There was some general cleanup and definitions, and there were some responsibilities added for public health emergencies, just what those responsibilities are. We also wanted to put in policy some of the purchasing allowances that, that the emergency manager can do purchasing, emergency purchases. Right now, it's in a draft of the purchasing policy, and we also put it in our declarations, but we wanted to put it in policy in a place we can find it when there is an emergency. But the main purpose was to get ahead of, knock on wood, fire season. We also had some feedback from a tabletop exercise we did on cybersecurity about exempt employees. And we want to put into policy that upon approval by supervisors, exempt employees would be eligible for overtime pay. It's a common practice. It is usually reimbursable when there's federal funds available. And it's something that FEMA or, and the state look for in policy so that if you do pay your, your exempt employees overtime, they are eligible for reimbursement. It's very common in the fire situations. And as I mentioned, our tabletop, when CDOT had a ransomware attack, IT staff were in there for six weeks straight. And there wasn't a mechanism for paying them overtime. There was no policy in place, and they suffered severe turnover and burnout because of that. So we're recommending putting it in place. Again, it requires supervisor approval. So it's only within, within budget. You could also do mechanisms like different shifts and stuff to avoid those overtime payments. So there would be some budgetary expenses, but again, supervisors need to approve, and there are things they can do with schedules. Anything you want to add?
I think this is the one that I would add is that this is only during an actual declared disaster. So we, you know, come to the county commissioners, the sheriff, to look for that signature to approve the disaster declaration. Once that's approved, then it all gets, it gets in plan and enacted along with all the purchasing criteria that we added in here. So.
And if I could add, the fires last summer, we had a tremendous amount of people who were exempt, who were working around the clock on this type of stuff. And Nate and I looked at all of this together, and our policies actually prohibited the payment. It's not like it was just discretionary. The way the policies were written, it was prohibited. So this would allow that fix. So you could financially reward the people who are working around the clock, who would otherwise be exempt for handling, responding to the disaster.
So there's two-fold positives here. A, it allows, you know, my office to work with the employees and say, look, we know that you're going to be in the EOC for long durations of time. You know, we're now able to help take care of you. It helps with that. But on the county side, it's also twofold because we're taking care of our county employees, but we're also able to use those funds as our county match. So it helps, it does help offset when we start looking at disaster recovery. I have yet to see anything in any of the federal shifting where they're moving away from this, or I would bring it to the attention of the board. But right now, it seems like this is still, as of this moment, this time, this date, a federally approved mechanism for a match reimbursement.
And, and one more thing, it's clear in Embar's case law or regulation, but when we looked at it last summer, you can't add a policy in the middle of the emergency. It has to be in place before the emergency occurs. Because we looked at that, could we add it to the emergency declaration that supervisors are authorized to award overtime? And that would not be reimbursable by FEMA if we had done it after the emergency declaration takes place. So that's another reason to get this done ASAP.
Okay, 3:00, Kim and I were going back and forth on this, like, can we do it now? No.
Commissioners, I'd also like to add that for me, it helps bring greater consistency in the organization, at least for a department similar to County Manager. So it doesn't require supervisors to pay overtime. It gives them that option. But at least we're taking one step closer to consistency. And now I would be actively working with our departments under a declared disaster and try and ensure that everything is fair as possible in the application of this policy.
And I did get with, from Heather Frizzell and the payroll supervisors, everything's already set up in Workday. We've already, we've already fixed that loophole. We had a long discussion about that. Their county partners did not have any questions or concern with the new time entry code. So once we activate a disaster declaration, we both have a project and a program code, because the sheriff and the county have to do two different things. So all that overtime, that rate, everything would be assigned to that project code. So we would have it tracked within that disaster. So we wouldn't have to go to Rowan Bridge and say, oh, I need your salary report. I would have all of that in there. And then the dual tracking between Workday and the disaster time sheets we developed in the U.S. Act CrossFit, so ensure that the employee signs the worksheet, says yes, they authorize they work this hour, meeting the legal requirements of a signature on the time card with back, backup within Workday.
And doesn't your new program, VOC, or whatever you call it, doesn't that allow people to enter their time clock in, clock out of the EOC? So that can be pretty automatic and captured as people are working, signing in and out of the EOC?
Great. Let's see if we have any questions, because I, I'm just gonna bet that we're all in support. So. Any questions, Commissioners?
I like, read, read first. My only question is, why are you assuming I'm in support?
It is at the end of the table. Come on now. I can say it at the end of the table.
I have thought about that.
Your Douglas County counterpart, how much do they want for their, like a million bucks a month from us?
I think it's a great idea. I'm just saying.
Okay. All right. Let's stay focused. Are we all in support of this item?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Kate. Thanks, Nate.
It's really Kate.
Yeah.
People are okay with it. Thanks, Nate.
For being here during the hearing. The other policy amendment is we had a relocation assistance that was really for candidates, a policy for relocation assistance to provide guidelines when you wanted to move someone into the position from out of state or whatever the contract or negotiations demanded. We want to amend this policy to add guidelines for candidate interviews. Right now, if we're interviewing from out of state, we fly them in, but there wasn't a policy. We've been picking and choosing. The HR team has been working, you know, working with the existing reimbursement policy for employees. But they get a lot of questions, and it wasn't clear. So we combined, changed the name of this policy, put some guidelines in there. It's, it's the standard per diem rates. You know, we pay for the hotel. We look at the airfare. It's cheapest. And just put in those parameters in a policy to try to provide those hiring managers that direction. Right now, we're just kind of, it's, we're providing guidelines, but it wasn't in policy. So we'd like to get that written. And if that's all right, I'm happy to answer any questions or bring that forward if you're okay with it.
Any comments?
You only ask for comments. I'm just, I'm just wondering, in, in the world of HR, and maybe this is a question for Jennifer, in the world of HR, especially post-COVID, everyone doing stuff online these days, is there a move to do more of these interviews and stuff virtually rather than the, the physical cost of flying people around and accommodation?
Yeah, I'm on. Can you hear me?
Hello?
Hi. Good, good morning. Yeah. So where we see this mostly is people often do those first rounds virtually by Zoom or WebEx or those types of tools. And then it's kind of when they're getting down to the final candidates, maybe their top two, especially for a leadership position, that's when they tend to, you know, fly out their one or two candidates to meet more people, to maybe do a tour, just to get a feel, you know, a little bit about their department or division or office. So yes, I would say, you know, the virtual tools are used for those first rounds, but this is really more applicable to those final interviews, if that helps.
Yeah. Now, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Okeydoke. Everyone in support?
Thumbs up.
Okay. Thanks, Kate. All in support. Next up, we've got reports from Commissioners. Commissioners, do you have any reports at this time?
Please go ahead. I was contacted by Anita Sights with a organization, let's see if I can find it real quick, CC4C. I think you guys are familiar with it. And I was asked if Jefferson County would consider signing on to a letter that they have initiated. This is a state and local elected letter regarding protecting state and local climate action. So the letter will be sent to Governor Polis, Attorney General Weiser, and each member of Colorado's congressional delegation. The point of the letter is to affirm Colorado and our, as a state, and then local governments' right to protect our air, water, and people from the climate crisis.
So I have a copy of the letter. I have signed on to it as an individual, as a personal individual. But I'm asking if the board would be interested in signing on as a collective.
I had also received that and sent it via Sarah to Kat and to Lori to also take a look at. They gave strong thumbs up in terms of support, so signed on as well. And certainly open to the board, Commissioner.
Yeah, I've, I have signed on to that personally as well. And I would, I would love for us to sign on as supportive.
Do Commissioners, would you like to work through Sarah to with Anita Sights to see if we can just sign on as a board of county commissioners?
Sure.
Okay.
I did that.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. All right, Commissioner Kerr?
Little bit along the same lines, but and I, I know other folks have been looking at this and working on this too. There's some federal legislation called Fix Our Forest Act that has support from some of our congressional delegation, not support from other members of our, of our federal delegation. And I know that there's some discussion on whether or not a lot of local communities in Colorado might, might be in support or not. There is a letter that was written with the Wilderness Society, Earth Justice, and I know that Commissioner Jonathan Howe from Gunnison County helped draft a letter to our senators. And I just wanted to bring it up for us to discuss. I'll, I'll be continuing to work with them. Commissioner actually went to DC a month or two ago to testify against the bill when it was in committee. And so I'm, I'm working with him and these other groups on this. I've seen some other information come across too, but just wanted to bring this up as, as maybe we could discuss. If we as, as a board want to take a stance one way or another, at least just discuss some of the various ins and outs of it.
That sounds, I think that sounds really good. And maybe having some help from Jeffco Open Space to sort of talk that through along the same lines. And I forwarded to Commissioners Zenzinger and Commissioner Kerr some additional information that we got from Congresswoman Pedersen's office and met with Hannah Mullen and Delaney, whose last name I'm blanking on right now, as he follows this public policy issue. And Delaney shared, while not perfect, it does move the needle in terms of giving forest managers more ability to look at forest management efforts, including stakeholder feedback grounded in science. It is different, and she underscored this, than Trump's executive order regarding timber production. That's really important because I think one of our concerns has been that some of the members of our community who have expressed concern about our forest mitigation and Jeffco Open Space has been responsive to those concerns and has made some changes as a result, may conflate the timber production executive order with science-backed strategic forest mitigation efforts. And we want to make sure that those are decoupled. They are very different in terms of the approach. So this bill would fast track the approval of mitigation projects that have been held up for about 10 years. I, I think, you know, there are pros and cons certainly with this. And there are different environmental groups lined up on either side. In fact, the Audubon Society is supportive, but I know that there are others as well that are not supportive. The Audubon, there is a person from the Audubon Society, a member of it, who's expressed concern about our forest mitigation efforts as an aside. But I think there's more to unpack here and would absolutely support looking at it further. And we have tons of additional information from Congresswoman Pedersen's office. I think there are three or four, ten.
Yeah.
It's more detailed. All right. Um, great. That's it for me. Joe, is there anything that you have in terms of reports?
Commissioner, the only item is one thing that you and I shared information on, which was a email regarding the article regarding Kent Ellis Innovation Park. That came from Mindy Moore. And you indicated you wanted to have a quick conversation on that.
Yes, that was, we all received that. And I thought it might be helpful if we wanted to just touch base about that. I don't know that we need to make any decisions right now, but I think it's one of those emails where it might be helpful if staff were to develop a response that could be sent by Sarah from the board. And I also wonder though, that, I also wonder if there isn't another conversation that we could have. And maybe this is a shorter response to Mindy right now in terms of looking into that. It may be that some of that is already addressed through our Together Jeffco process and through other initiatives that are underway. But what I would like to see is some dedication of some time to outline what we currently have in place, how we potentially connect with the issues that Mindy is raising and others, other advocates who are very concerned about the issue of housing availability, growth and development in that area as we see quantum and other emerging technologies and, and job opportunities come to that area. So I think in the short term, if there is a, perhaps a briefer response from the board of county commissioners, just acknowledging that we received the email, we're looking into this issue. We've asked staff to dig in a little bit further. And then we have a conversation first based on what staff has found. And then think about maybe a more detailed response if it, if it warrants it. But I do think they raise a really good point. I just want to make sure we're not duplicating efforts that are already underway. And if there are any gaps with existing efforts, then let's see if we need to pinpoint that. So I just want, thank you, Joe. I wanted to put that on the table. I'm glad you brought that up because I emailed Joe to ask if, thank you. Just wanted to put that on the table for us all to see if you felt comfortable with that approach moving forward.
Yeah, I like that a lot. And I agree. I do believe that there is planning that is going on. For the most part, it's taking place within the city of Arvada because this is located within the city of Arvada. But that doesn't mean that we are not aware of it, that we aren't so planning, that we aren't thinking about the surrounding areas. And not only that, but I do believe that that has a connection to the Jefferson Public Parkway as well. I'm quite positive that that is part of the reasoning that feeds into why we are a part of that coalition. So I do believe that there, that's a good approach and it doesn't hurt to refresh our memories about what we are doing and then identify any possible gaps.
Commissioners, just a further clarification. So when we come back to the board, we can certainly put that response together. But as we dive deeper into this topic with the board, would you like to do that in form of a briefing or in a Wednesday meeting or in a future work session? Any feedback on that?
I think a Wednesday session might be good because I don't know if there's anything that we're going to need to advance, at least as of right now, to a hearing, which is typically what we're using those Tuesday briefings for. So I think if, if staff could come back to us after we, you know, put together a shorter response that goes out this week through Sarah from the board, if staff could just dig a little bit deeper, kind of pull those components and then maybe report back to us at a Wednesday meeting, that would be helpful. And then we could determine what we want to do further.
I was just, would, does this fit in anything that we're looking at in our work session next week?
Commissioner, no, it doesn't.
Okay. Then I was gonna say if it did, let's do that. But then on Wednesday's.
And I'd also like to highlight that there are some connections to the Jeffco EDC. Because they have plans for the types of businesses that we are looking to attract to Jeffco for very specific reasons. In order to fill in under areas around, I, I, I cannot think of the term, but I, I just recall the presentation that Jansen made to us. And there was a deficiency in a particular type of business that they're hoping to fill in with this type of, the quantum commons really accommodates. Like it fits into that plan with a certain something. And I just, I cannot get my hands around what that was. But I just, I recall in his presentation, he talked about how that fits into that planning that they're doing. So I think it's going to be really important that we touch base with Jeffco EDC because they are specifically mentioned in that article as well that Mindy forwarded to us.
Absolutely. She mentions a couple of stakeholders in her email, including EDC.
I do have a meeting with Jansen late this afternoon.
Okay, great.
It's one of the five things on my list right now. So perfect timing.
Just to mention that it's been in the news the last week or so that I've heard that rental rates are actually decreasing for the first time in a long time. And that last year with the, with the build out of a little over 20,000 units in the Denver metro area, almost all apartments, almost all apartments, but the 20, the 20,000 units is an increase of what's happened over the past few years. And that's actually helped drive down rental rates by about 3.5%. So, you know, it's not specific to the, but it's, it's, I think that's good news for our affordable housing conversation in general. And so, and that's very different than, than we've had in, gosh, at least five or six years. So.
Yeah, I heard that report today on NPR. Yeah, Colorado.
And yeah, it's, it's interesting seeing that, you know, just a little bit. They're, they're saying the, the biggest benefit of course is to the higher end, not quite luxury, but higher end rental units, brand new is that's, that's the, the area that the most, the most units are. But I mean, that's still units that people are going to be renting and probably opening up other units that are even less expensive. So.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. I have loved watching them at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
Oh. I'm sorry, that just reminded, Commissioner, last night, the Lakewood, not renewal, LRA, Lakewood.
Urban Renewal Authority.
Yeah. We met last night and we officially voted to recommend the bend moving forward to the, the city of Lakewood. And it was, yeah.
Thank you for that. I'll go to our county attorney next.
No updates from the office. Just a reminder that next week I will be heading to Caitlin's graduation. So I will have on my out of office, whether it's Carrie or Eric, on the day who will be acting county attorney during that time. And with that, I will ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport for legal advice under CRS 2464024B, the Senior Resource Center, legal advice under the same citation, advice to negotiators under 4024E, and real property under 4024A. And then finally, the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail for purposes of legal advice under 4024B, advice to negotiators under 4E, and real property under 4A.
I move we go to executive section for the reasons outlined by our county attorney.
Second. Anyone opposed? We'll move into executive session.